You're mute.
Mr. Nick Chesney? Mr. Nick Chesney?
Here.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Ludman?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Kinsella?
Here.
Mr. Shavetti?
Here.
Mr. Leader?
Here. Uh, yeah, I did all that out of order. Okay. Um, one of these days I'll figure this out. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, they're experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authorities specifically set forth in the borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law is quasi-judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards approved. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variances relate to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Would you please join me?
Mr. Leader, before you continue, I just wanted to say, since you were out of order earlier, um, you may want to read the Sunshine Law again since the recording only started at roll call.
And then let's read it. Yeah, if the recording wasn't on, then please, Todd, if you don't mind, let's read it again.
Very good. Um, I will do this one more time. This is the, maybe I'll do it better the second time. This is the March 2021 Regular Meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule of the board's regular meetings was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. Tonight's meeting was listed in the notice of the schedule of regular meetings. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. In addition, a copy of the notices and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Would you please join me in a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Okay. We have three matters on the agenda this evening. Um, and before we move to our first matter, we're going to discuss the Sullivan matter. Uh, Mr. Irene, walk us through what's happened on the Sullivan matter, please.
Mr. Chairman, the board will recall that this matter was listed on our agenda for February 4, 2021. It was listed third that evening. Um, we did not reach it and the matter was carried to tonight's meeting without the necessitary notice with a stipulation from Apkins Council extending time which to act. We have received communications from Jennifer Crimco, Apkins Council on the Sullivan matter, requesting that the matter be carried. I spoke to Ms. Crimco earlier today and advised that as a result of the board's agenda for April bring pretty much filled already, that it was my understanding that the matter was going to be carried to the May agenda. Uh, I received, Ms. Crimco advised that she would stipulate an extension of time which the board has to act through May 30. And I received a text from her confirming that earlier and she advised that she would send a confirming email tomorrow. So the Apkins requesting the matter to be carried to the May meeting of the board without the necessitary notice and the Apkins providing a stipulation through May 30, uh, extending time which the board has to act.
Uh, so I would like to make a motion to carry the Sullivan matter to the, uh, May meeting, without any obligation for the applicant to, uh, issue additional notices.
And we should just announce, Mr. Chairman, that's the May 6, 2021 meeting of the board.
Thank you, Michael. I need a second.
A second.
Who's that? Ridgeway?
Oh, anybody who wants to like.
Motion Leader, second Mr. Chesney.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
So the record will reflect, Mr. Chairman, that the Sullivan matter, 47 Lake Street, has been carried to the May 6, 2021 meeting of the board, same time via Zoom, without the necessitary notice. There'll be no further notice, so any interested parties that may be in attendance should mark their calendar accordingly. Do we want to see, Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody that has any questions on that before you move on to the next matter? See if anybody wants to raise their hand?
Sure. Uh, I noticed that we have a total of 28 participants tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions with regard to what we've done related to the Sullivan matter, please? Uh, if so, use the raise your hand feature to indicate that you'd like to be brought forward to speak. None.
No response. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, with that, we'll call up the CramsY matter and Joe, if you can move me to the audience, please.
But let the record reflect that Mr. Leader is recusing himself with regard to this matter and removing himself from the active panelists. And Mr. Nick Chesney, the CramsY matter, as the board members will recall, was commenced at the last meeting of the board on February 4, and it was continued to tonight's meeting without the necessity for renotice. And I see Mr. CramsY and I see Mr. Brower, his architect.
Yep.
So I know we swore you each in at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Brower, but we're just going to do it again. Would you just give me your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Correct. John Brower, B R O W E R, 678 Leoni Street, Woodbridge, New Jersey.
And I'm going to swear you in. Sir, you do swear in testimony against the board to be the truth, all truth, not but truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Mr. CramsY, if you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Sure. Blake CramsY, uh, 77 Willow Street, Fairhaven, New Jersey. Last name is spelled C R A M as in Mary, S I E. Um, and Mr. Irene, I also have my wife Amelia in the, in the audience. Um, if you could admit her.
Uh, sure. So why don't we swear you in first and we'll do that?
Okay.
And you do swear in testimony against the board to be the truth, all truth, and then the truth?
Yes, sir.
And I see that, uh, Mr. Muley is, is admitting, is it Ms. Amelia CramsY?
Yes. He was really talking. Hi there.
Hi. Are we allowed, are we allowed to have your video?
Uh, oh, yes. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, so ma'am, hi, how are you? Would you give us your full names, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Sure. Amelia CramsY, 77 Willow Street, Fairhaven, New Jersey. C R A M S I E.
I'm going to swear you in, ma'am. You do swear any testimony against the board to be the truth, all truth, and not but truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And while we're swearing in people, Ms. Gable, you do swear in testimony against the board to be the truth, all truth, and not but truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We're all sworn in. Um, as we, everybody recalls, we asked for some adaptations to the plan last month, um, some ideas to mitigate the frontage on Oak Street. And, uh, the applicants come back with some possibilities. So, Mr. Brower, the floor is yours.
Okay. So where we left off last month, uh, as you just stated, we needed to, um, come up with some options that may, uh, be more appealing to the board. So what we did was we came up with a list of three separate options in addition to the original, uh, proposed option that was the original submittal. So the first option, which we're calling option two, because option one is going to be always identified as the, uh, the option that was submitted for the variance.
Mr. Brower, if, if I could just interrupt you for one minute, just, just so we have a clear record here. So this is the, I, I assume the exhibits that we're going to be looking at now are sheets of the single exhibit that was submitted, proposed additions and alterations plans prepared by John C. Brower, AIA, Dugas and Brower Architects, consisting of seven sheets dated September 15, 2020, revised through February 22, 2021?
Yes.
That's the package. Okay. And I believe we were up to A dash four and Judy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but otherwise we'll mark this package as A dash four, all seven sheets.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brower. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, not a problem. Is, is my sound coming through okay?
It's a little muffled, but, um, we might do with it.
Okay, maybe I'll sit a little closer maybe. So as you see on the screen, we have the first option, which was in order to break up the area in question where the second floor addition was going to be located, uh, one of the options was to possibly put a balcony. Um, this would give you the break on that elevation. I give you, and probably give you a nicer element to look at on the Oak Place elevation. Now, in this particular option, we maintain the same roof profile that we originally proposed, which is the wider roof across the full back of the house, which is, I'm sorry, not the full back, but over the master bedroom, there's a, there's a roof addition over the, uh, proposed master ba- uh, bathroom. So this would maintain the wider roof profile, which matches the width of the main body of the house.
The, the width of that porch, Mr. Brower, is?
The width of the balcony itself?
Yeah.
Uh, the balcony itself is?
Three feet?
About eleven and a half feet, uh, left to right and just, just under four feet.
Just under four. Okay.
Okay. We figured that was, what, what we did with that was that wall, in order to make that roof, uh, profile match, that wall lines up with the front of the house. So if you see where my hand is, that's where that, that line was struck. So that was the first option.
And was that basically just taking four feet off that bedroom or have you shifted anything over to?
Yeah, essentially, the only thing that, that really changed was there's four feet off of the bedroom. The roof structure would stay the same and then we pick up the balcony detail as well.
So you're about 11 by 15 on the bedroom still, close to that?
Uh, yeah, we're about just under 15 by 11 and a half.
Okay.
All right. The second option that we explored was the same, was the same idea of, of a balcony, but instead of having the roof covering over it, we, we stepped the roof in to match the width of the, of the, of the narrower addition. So what we get is the break in the roof plane along here, which doesn't occur with the other option. Okay, essentially from a plan standpoint, it's the same, it's the same situation. It's the same sized balcony. It's just it's uncovered at that point. And the master bedroom will be reduced to the same size. Okay? And then our last option was, we, we thought we had to look at doing some sort of a roof profile, because I know Todd had mentioned, um, that he liked the look of the covered front porch. Let's see what a roof might look like along the one side. Essentially, what we did was we stepped the roof in a foot and a half, I believe it was, along that side. Yeah, I don't have that dimension. It's, it's a foot and a half off. We stepped that bedroom in. And we took the roof with it. So that gets us the, the break in the roof plane and it gets us the wall stepped in and it gives us a little profile for a roof. Of all the options, this is the least desirable because it, it doesn't maintain the, the larger attic space and it just reduces the size of the bedroom. So our feeling is that this was, this would be the least, um, approved, you know, option from the client's standpoint.
Because op- option three is not, option three is not covered either, right? Does that reduce the attic?
Not covered, correct.
So does that have the same effect with the attic?
Yes. It makes, it reduces the size of the attic as well on that one. Oops, sorry.
Um, I assume you've reviewed, given us a new number for square footage with the reduction, with the, the reduction of the, the?
Yeah, there's various numbers. Um, basically the, the option two and the option three are reduced by the same. Uh, those were reduced down to the habitable floor area for option two would bring us down to 1,918. The same would be true for option three because it's the same impact on the floor plan. And option four, which is the, the roof, the roof cover only, would bring you down to 1,942. Would you like to discuss the options first before we show any of the other, other exhibits?
Um, we can't do, uh, thoughts. I mean, my personal thought on it is I think you've done a really nice job giving some alternatives to, uh, what we have here. I, I personally, I particularly like option two. I think it looks to me like that could have been part of the original house. That's just my feeling when I see that side. And I think it's a pretty, pretty, uh, a good concept. Uh, I think breaking the roof lineup as in option three and four, I think looks really choppy. That's just my, my layman's look at it. Um,
I agree.
I think it looks really pretty. I, I do. It does, does the job of softening that front, that side of the house sufficiently to, to my eyes and it gives you a little bit of uniqueness in that thing. It doesn't really, I know it's 40 foot, 40 square feet-ish off your master bedroom, but it's still a fair enough size bedroom that, that it's not, you know, uh, the cubes are detrimental. Um, that's just my take.
I have a question for Mr. Brower. Um, just if you could just reorient us, you, you mentioned the habitable floor area ratio on options two and three would be 1918, 1942 on option four. Where were we on the prior plan and where are we today? Was the prior plan 1965, I think I have in my notes. Is that right?
I'm not sure. I have to look at the paperwork for that.
But, but while you're looking, Mr. Brower, they, they all conform, right? All the options conform to habitable floor area and habitable floor ratio limitations?
Yes, we're not looking for any variances for habitable floor area.
Exacerbating the setback.
Really, it's an issue that we were having, that we're having the issue with.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think we have a far or a, or a cap.
Got it. Thank you. All right.
All good. Okay.
But he also thoughts on, on what we've seen, um, good, bad, indifferent?
Mr. Brower?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pat.
Um, looking at the submission, the way you guys described these options, um, is it, is it right that the homeowner would prefer option two out of the three?
That is correct. Yes. Yes, that is correct.
And, um, one of the concerns is that the two, I guess, option three and four would inhibit access to the attic?
Yes, that was, one of the concerns was the reduction in the size of the attic space for those two options.
So let's, let's talk about that attic space while, while the subject has come up. Um, I know Mrs. Ms. Gable's, uh, review letter, as well as some other, uh, questions have come up about the staircase and the habitable attic. Um, that staircase is a proposed staircase, the fixed stair, or is it already in place?
It is not in place right now. It was something that was being discussed during, during the, uh, course of construction at this time. Uh, one of the options that we do want to maintain is the ability to be able to try and use this attic as much as possible.
I, I think if we're going to propose it, we should assume that it's going to eventually come into fruition and, uh, include that attic space in the calculation. To be, to, to be clear, I don't think it's going to take you over at any rate. Now, the definition that Ms. Gable pointed out in her review of the habitable attic is one-third of this, what is it, one-third of the total space, Elena?
Yeah, it's seven, floor to ceiling height of seven feet, no more than one-third of that area being the floor below. Um, so, and I had actually talked to Nick Portinsky and also, uh, Joe Mulay about this. And my understanding is that when you calculate the habitable space of the habitable attic, you only include the areas of that floor that are floor to ceiling, that's seven feet and greater. Because that's what makes it habitable is the, it's based off of the Uniform Construction Code.
So you've got, um, what there, Mr. Brower? Was it two foot up in my?
Yeah, and essentially after I was speaking with, uh, Ms. Gable yesterday regarding this, this issue, I came up with a diagram showing this, the footprint of the house with the, the dashed line you see here. And this is essentially what the usable space of the attic would be at the second, or the, uh, you know, in the attic space.
It's not a whole lot, but it is some storage.
Right. Essentially, the, my, my client is looking for a space to just put his office, so he has a place for a desk and a computer, uh, being that the existing basement is unusable. So when we looked at the calculation, if, if this is the proposed area where the stair would be, this is essentially the only place on the, on the second floor plan that, that a stair would actually work to get to the attic. And then once you're in the attic, the, with the proposed roof along the back over the rear addition, carried across to the, to the, to the main body of the house, there's only a three foot by 26 foot, four and a half inch length of space, which is really at the seven foot mark. Essentially, the rest of the space would be delineated with four foot high knee walls and essentially you're left with, with this space. So the seven foot high ceiling here, ceiling area right now, there, there's a question as to whether or not, and I, and I think Elena explained to me yesterday, that I think Fairhaven may include the area of the stair as well in this. But as it's drawn right now, this, this.
The area of the stair would be encapsulated in the second floor calculation.
Yes, that's already included in that 1918 that we discussed.
Right. So you'd just be adding one of two foot 11 by 26.
Right. So that square footage is 77 square feet. The area that that roof area covers, which is what our denominator would be, would be the area that's encompassed by this space, because that's the actual roof coverage of that. So if we take that 77 feet divided by the 579 that it covers, we're only at 13.3%. So we're well under on the habitable.
Okay, good. And, and, and for the, for all intents and purposes, I think we, we would need to include that, um, number in the calculation tonight in your final, you know?
Right. And as it stands right now, the worst case, the, the number that was submitted for the variance, we were at a habitable floor area of 1965. If you added that 77 in, we're at 2,042. We're well under the 2,200.
That 1965 reflects the three foot, uh, the 40.
Right. That's the original submittal. So we're actually less than that. So it's actually 1918 plus the 77 would be your, your total habitable.
Okay, good.
So we're going to mark that as Exhibit A dash five, the possible habitable attic sketch prepared by Mr. Brower. Is it dated, Mr. Brower?
Uh, no, but I did this drawing, uh, yesterday.
Okay. Well, there it is. A dash five.
I did submit it, uh, earlier this morning, but I'm not sure if it was actually, uh, added to the list of exhibits. And this, this area of the drawing actually just shows you a, a section through that attic, showing you the profile of the functional space.
Is that part of what we just marked as A dash five?
It's all part of the same exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
Two foot 11. Oh, that's just the two foot 11. That's under, that's over seven.
That's just a seven foot up here.
Ah.
These are just the knee walls on the side.
Okay. So you do have a little bit of space that's usable. They have storage, uh, desk or whatever. That's, that's not bad.
Exactly.
Good.
Do we need to see this exhibit anymore or should I shut it down?
I'm good with it. Anybody on the board? No? Go ahead. Um, one other issue I think that we had outstanding was the, that also contributed to the setback was that, the rear porch there.
Right.
And while it's an open deck porch, whatever, it is exacerbating the, the, um, the side yard setback and the frontage on Oak Place. We mentioned it several different possibilities last month about the reduction in size, perhaps eliminating it, uh, going steps down to the patio. Um, has any thought been given to mitigating that? Because that is exacerbating the side yard setback as well.
What, what we decided was, there's really not a way to lift the stair because it, it messes with the function of the inside of the house, the layout of the house. So what we decided was the owner is willing to give up the backspace where we were showing the, uh, possible, um, what do you call it, barbecue grill. So what we did was we reduced the size of the encroachment in that rear yard by almost two and a half feet. So this area over here on the drawing has been eliminated. Um, I have to load up a drawing that shows. I'm going to scroll this down. Sorry for all the movement.
Yeah.
But when you look at the drawing here, the proposed back area where the grill was sit, was seated, has been, uh, been removed. So the original rear yard setback we had submitted was at 21.5 feet and now with the change, we're at 23.8.
Yeah, we're looking at 30. Um, any, any reason we, I mean, removing that functionality, which is, is appreciated, um, any reason we wouldn't give thought to just having a couple of steps go down out of the, out of the French door onto a, a larger patio space, let's say? Uh, I think you've got minimal functionality there. You know, and, and, and you're requiring guidance or be for it. Personally, I would, uh, if, if you're not going to put a grill there, um, you know, why not just go with a set of stairs and, and eliminate that variance?
Well, essentially what you, what you'd end up with is, like, by code, I have to, I have to put a landing at that door anyway. So whether I have a three foot landing with a step going to the side or a three foot and change landing with a step going towards the garage, it almost doesn't matter because you're still going to need a variance for it. Um, so in, in this particular case, this, this allowed us to keep the patio more focused in this area. If the stairs went straight out, we would be looking at extending possibly the patio further out and possibly increasing more lock coverage, uh, on the property.
Does that, do, do we have a side yard variance? Is that just a rear yard or is it a rear and a side of?
Is that rear and a front?
A rear and a front. Okay. So it is two variances, but that, that, the, the 14 two is just to the corner of the house, but what is it, another? Uh,
Great. So the required rear yard setback.
Rear's 30, right?
I.
Yes, the rear yard setback is 30.
Yeah, the rear yard setback is 30 feet and then the front yard setback along Oak Place is supposed to be 25.
When you're at what, 15 there?
So it's technically within that front yard setback.
Okay. So we're exacerbating the front yard setback with that porch and the rear yard setback. Both. Okay.
So those were essentially the two, the two topics from last month that were, uh, that were addressed.
Um, understandably, I mean, from what I've seen, you, you know, uh, you would prefer that option two. I, I, my personal opinion, I think that's the best looking and most functional one of the three that you've presented. Uh, if the, if, if you, I don't know, do you memorialize it now and say that that's what you want us to consider? Um, you know, I just want to be sure that that's what the board is going to consider.
That's up to my client.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, absolutely. But yeah, I think we could focus on that.
Um, so you can withdraw? Mr. CramsY?
Three and four, done.
Sorry, Pat?
You're going to withdraw three and four? I mean, it's a little difficult. Just, I noticed your page says in, uh, you know, caps, "The owner does not like the option three and option four," which we appreciate, appreciate you drawing it out for us to see why you wouldn't like it. I think that the first, um, change, which unfortunately is the most expensive one, um, really addresses the issues that the board raised last month, but still maintains a lot of what you're trying to achieve with the house. Because you're keeping that wide roof along the back. So you don't look like you're kind of trying to squish it in, but you're still getting the benefit of the setback from that master bedroom and giving yourself a pretty little, uh, you know, a little deck out there on the second floor too. So I think it was a really good, um, good way to mitigate the concerns that the board raised.
Okay, good.
There was some comment about reduction in windows. Was that purely, you had two windows there that's been now reduced to a French door? Was that the, um? There was some comment about reduction in windows. Was that purely you had two windows there that's been now reduced to a French door? Was that the um?
Um, I'm not sure, there there was the narrow, I'm sorry.
We had four windows there.
Master bedroom. It was four previously in the initial proposal, and because of the addition of the balcony, it was reduced to three of those four rectangular windows on the rear facade.
Correct. Let's see the windows here.
Wow. Oh, it's on the back, okay.
Right. Any other questions or comments for these options or?
Sorry?
Are there any other questions regarding these options or?
Mr. Brower, if I may, so the so the bulk variances with option two are are as you described, we got the dimensions of the site, which obviously aren't changing. You have the front yard setback off of oak, which is proposed nine point five, twenty five feet required. And that I understand is for that deck porch thing, I guess. And then you have the rear yard setback that you just described, uh twenty three point eight feet proposed where thirty is required again as a result of that porch deck area.
Yes.
Okay, the garage is not being changed, that's pre-existing uh setback deviations, and that's all we have. You conform to the floor cap, conform to the floor ratio, even with the proposed possible habitable attic.
Correct.
Thank you.
I I would just want to insert one caveat that should the board see to grant uh relief on this with that option two with the porch there, and and this is only because I have some experience some twenty twenty five years ago with with a similar situation, that we would want to memorialize in the resolution that that porch is to remain an open porch and not enclosed at any point. Um, part of the, I think, part of the mitigation process is that it really does break the facade up. But I can see somebody coming in fifteen years saying, we'll just put a couple of walls up here and nobody will know the difference. Um, and I I think that's an important thing. Not that you would do that, but it would just make me feel more comfortable to have that sort of thing, given the uh the tightness on that corner.
Understood.
You also have any questions for uh Mr. Brown, Mr. Ramsey? Any discussion more about?
No, sir.
Back porch guys? You okay with that?
Uh, all right, I'll wait. And I like the porch. I I think the porch um gives you a nice covered balcony uh off the master bedroom. I think that's a nice addition to the house.
I'm sorry, is that who's talking?
Oh, Dr. Lauffer.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it breaks things up from the uh from the uh Oak Place side. And uh I think it's a nice look. I think it's very attractive and uh I I think you've done a good job proposing that.
Good, thank you.
What what do we think about the back, the uh the steps, back steps area? Um, I know it's been reduced from the rear, that still is encroaching in our side yard though. I mean, I I know the only other option is just to do a couple of steps down, which obviously is not as visually appealing, but but Mr. Brower, I didn't realize that you had to put a landing there. I'm not sure, why why is that? The code says you need a landing on three.
Uh generally at any door, you need to have a landing. Uh with this, it depends on the door. Um, in that particular case, um, they may actually not require it, uh depends on the type of door that's used. Uh but generally, from a safety feature, usually a landing at the doors is preferred.
Any other board members have any questions?
Peter or or Dr. Lauffer and with the with my other members of the board. Option two, uh I think this is a great example of um working together to come up with a good option that that'll work on the street. Um, I think it's a very attractive um proposal. Uh I I think that back deck um uh Vice Chairman is is well kept, it's probably even a safety measure. I'm sure it's going to get a lot of traffic coming in and out of that door, knowing there's the driveway is right off of that and the garage. Um, as we had testimony last week, this is one of the original um properties on the street. Um, you know, it's uh wasn't knocked down. I think uh we heard a lot of testimony that uh uh this is a good option uh on it. Um, yeah, it's a very heavily trafficked street with all the sickles and the school traffic, but um, yeah, I think what's uh in uh in front of us here tonight is a is a great solution. So thank you for your time.
Um, anybody else have questions for Mr. Brower or Mr. Ramsey? No, Mr. Brower, do you have anything further?
Uh, I'm not sure how much more information you need. Um, we do have other exhibits that we provided showing some photographs of this.
Yeah, actually, thank you very much for for jogging my memory. Um, I noticed in your submission that there was a submission of a variance relief that was granted in nineteen seventy three. I wasn't quite sure the purpose of that, but but if you feel the need to present it by all means.
Yeah, we knew that the that the addition was put on at some point in the in the past. We weren't sure exactly when, so the my client had a discussion with the previous owner, and they actually still had some of the paperwork. So this was the original survey that was submitted for that variance back in nineteen seventy three, showing that this is the area where the where the proposed addition was built. That one story structure that you see on the back of the house now. And this is just some documentation showing uh when they went for their building, that their building permit, that the variance was granted back in May of nineteen seventy three.
Do we have a resolution, Mr. Brower?
For this? No, this is the only documentation that we have.
All right, well, we we should mark this. So what are we up to? A dash six? Do we want to mark them together? A dash six survey and what is that other thing, a permit?
It's actually the application for uh building permit.
Survey and application for building permit from, what is it, nineteen seventy three?
Uh nineteen seventy three, correct.
And what was that, a rear addition?
That was the rear one story addition that's currently on the house right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brower.
I'm not sure if you're interested in seeing any of the photos of the street. Uh, we just have some, we took some measurements along the properties on the street. The photos just basically show that that most of the properties along Oak Place because of its extreme narrowness. Um, most of the houses don't actually conform to the setback. And if you actually, I have the survey up, the original survey, but you can see the existing house is actually twisted on the property and and doesn't, it isn't parallel with Oak Place. So actually, the proposed work that we're doing is actually in the in the area of the house that's further away from the property.
Um, I I don't need to see the photos of around the porch, but if anybody else would like to view them, by all means.
And am I the only one having difficulty hearing Mr. Nuchesny? Is it my sound?
I'll turn my mic up. Hold on, Mr. Irene. I tend to keep it low because it has a habit of reverberating.
So I don't think there's really anything else that we need to show per se, unless somebody wants to see some specific information. I think uh, you know, I think we've seen the proposal at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um. Open up to the public. Any members of the public wish to step forward and comment on any of the exhibits?
Or ask questions of any of the Atkins witnesses?
Yeah, I got one raised hand. I will uh bring him in or allow them to talk. Let's.
Mr. Irene, is my mic a little bit better now?
Much better. Thank you, Mr. Nuchesny.
Okay, I've got one attendee, Christina, you're on if you're if you can hear.
Oh, hi, my name's Christina Malecki and I'm here with my husband Andrew Malecki.
Hi, my name's Andrew Malecki and uh we actually live on fifteen Oak Place.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm gonna just, I don't know if these are going to be questions or comments, so I'm gonna swear you each in and then then we'll allow you to proceed with whatever you have, okay? So Chris Christine Malecki, could you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
My last name M A L E C K I. And the address is fifteen Oak Place.
And I'm gonna swear in, you do swear any testimony against board will be the truth, all truth and nothing but truth?
Yes.
And Mr. Malecki, could I have your full names, spell your last or address for the record, please?
My name is Andrew Malecki. That's M A L E C K I. My address is fifteen Oak Place, Fairhaven, New Jersey, oh seven seven oh four.
And I'm gonna swear you in also, you do swear testimony against board of your truth, all truth and nothing but truth?
I do.
Are are we on, is that a photograph or do we have your video?
Uh, we should, we should have video. Uh.
You know why? I'm Mr. Irene, I'll have to bring him in as panelist, let me do that.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. If we can get rid of the um uh screen, the screen share, we can see, I think, a little better.
Brower.
Thank you. And we have Mr. and Mrs. Malecki.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've sworn you in and you can ask questions of the Atkins witnesses or you can give the board any comments or testimony you may have.
So we live on fifteen Oak Place, so we're actually Blake's neighbor. Uh, so we look at his house pretty much every single day when I go to eat breakfast in my dining room and I wash dishes in the kitchen. So uh we love option two, we think it'll look fantastic. Uh, we love that little balcony area. So we really just can't wait uh for it to be completed. So we're, we we love it and we don't have any problems with whatsoever. And we live on the street and I look at it every single day. So we're, I'm I'm great with it.
We're excited for the construction to be over and our neighbors to be home.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Malecki.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more, Joe?
Yep, got a couple more, hang tight, we'll get them over. I'll bring them in as panelist. I got Marguerite Sheehan, hang on. She's coming in. Marguerite, you may want to unmute, please.
Okay.
If you have video, get your video, one if you have it.
I'll start for you. Okay. Is it working?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, uh Machine, if you could give us your full names, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Marguerite Sheehan, um S H E E H A N sixteen Oak Place.
And I'm gonna swear in, you do swear testimony against board will be the truth, all truth and nothing but truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to re- reiterate the what the Malecki said. I agree. I think the solutions were great and um the balcony solution was very clever. And I think it looks really good, so I just wanted to um repeat what they said. I thought we see a lot of their house too from our home and um the back is beautiful. I think every everything that they proposed looks would be great. That's all.
Thank you.
We have one more coming in. Mr. Ken Rainey. Ken, you're on. Video, audio, please.
Hey, guys, uh, my name is uh Ken Rainey. Um, I live at sixty seven Willow Street.
Can we, can we get video, Mr. Rainey?
Um. I don't know, uh I'll be honest with you, I think I I see myself talking.
We got you, we got, we got you. Okay, you live at six sixty seven Willow Street. Now we're gonna swear you in, you do swear testimony against board of your truth, all truth and nothing but truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, guys, I live on sixty seven Willow Street, right across the street. Uh, I've lived here since nineteen ninety three. Uh, the previous owner was Jim Butler, who still love him to this day, great guy, decided to get up and move to Rumsen. Uh, got this great young family moving in next door. As uh much as I love Jim Butler, the house needed to be updated uh to go along with the block in the house. I think the people are doing a great job. I don't think there's anything wrong with the construction that's going on. I mean, compared to some of these other monstrosities that are going up around town, this is a beautiful house. Uh, they're a young family. I think we should do, be a part of, um, let them come to this community as fast as they can to raise their young family to get in here, be part of the community. Uh, this is a great town to raise a a family in, and they're having a tough time getting in here now with their two young kids. And I'd love to see them get everything passed here tonight. Um, I have a business in town. I see a lot of strange things going up. Um, but this is not one of them. This is a great job by the architect, the builder and the homeowner. I mean, I hope you can find it within your hearts to uh pass this so they can get going and uh get their family registered for school for next year and get everything going.
Great. Great, thanks very much, Ken.
That's it, Pete.
Clear, Joe? Okay, great. Okay, good. Um, this question. I'm not sure personally that uh I have much else to add to what I said before, so I'm just gonna let somebody else speak who hasn't spoke.
Pete, we got a late attendee with a hand raised.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Didn't uh, gonna put him in. Ask him to unmute and put video on.
Come on, Joe.
Ma'am, you're muted. Press the spacebar.
No muted.
Okay. Hi, this is Barbara Shudden at fifty Oak Place.
Ma'am, could you spell your last name, please?
S H E D D E N.
And I'm gonna swear you in, you do swear testimony against board will be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And I I concur with uh Ken Rainey and I'm looking forward to his family moving in as soon as uh everything is available and ready and um I agree with the plans.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody thoughts that haven't been voiced, anything different?
Yeah, Pete, I don't really have much to add. I, it hasn't already been said. I just appreciate uh the Ramsey's and the efforts of Mr. Brower to bring in a nice application and uh be sensitive to some of the comments from last month's meeting. I think option two looks great.
Yeah, I I agree with that and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Ramsey, Mr. Brower, for your flexibility and and patience. I think you clearly heard the board's concerns at the last meeting and it's a great example of just a renovation, you know, working to uh to take our comments into consideration and um I think it looks great.
Um, I would agree with my other board members, but you know, I would like to commend the Ramsey's. You know, this is a challenging lot and a challenging house and, you know, it would have been probably easier maybe to tear this uh property down, but you know, they're investing money in uh probably one of, you know, one of the older houses in town, not the oldest, but you know, it's a it's a pretty important house and it's in a high-traffic neighborhood there and uh, you know, renovation is better than uh a new build and I think this uh, this is gonna bring this house up to uh, you know, a style that works for today, but keeps, you know, keeps the look and feel of uh of uh, you know, that little neighborhood right there uh in Oak, you know, in Oak Street there. So uh, you know, I think it's great and that the changes that you made listening to the board, um, you know, this is the way uh ideally things should work and I commend you guys for that.
Any more? Any here to make a motion?
I may, I'll move to um approve the proposed option number two, containing the amendments to the. I may, I'll move to um, approve the proposed option number two, containing the amendments to the uh. The application.
Pat, do you wanna memorialize that the uh, second floor balcony not be closed in?
Yes.
Now, just a question on that, when Mr. Nachesney said the porch to remain open, are we talking about both the second floor balcony and the porch remaining open?
I think there's only one second floor balcony, right, Mr. Rainey?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Nachesney, I, I'm losing you again.
No, second floor balcony should remain. Unenclosed.
Okay. So the reference to the porch was a reference to the second floor balcony?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Just a question, and I know that I'm going out of turn here unfortunately, because we have a motion, but just for my guide, that the, the attic is in your, is in the total calculation, correct?
Uh, the total calculation that we showed on the exhibit, that's, I'll give you the exact number here.
Yeah, it, I, I just wanna make sure that what we're going to. Uh, approve includes that square footage and I wanna make sure that that's in the plan as, as submitted. Uh, to the starting official.
Yes, when, when, when the drawings are submitted for permits, the, all the calculations will reflect the habitable attic, the square footages, the, the diagram, everything that like that will be shown.
Good, that's fine.
And the total will be two oh four two, including the.
Uh, no, it's actually be a little less than that because we're, we're, we're dealing with a smaller second floor now, so it's actually one thousand nine eighteen plus the seventy-seven, which puts you at one nine nine five.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think. We have a second, right, Judy? You're muted.
Mr. Kinsella, you were absent uh, last month, did you listen to the tape?
Did, yes, I did.
Okay.
I'm sorry, do we have, do we have a certification for Mr. Kinsella? Then, Mr. Kinsella, I'm gonna swear you in.
Okay.
You, you, you do swear and certify that you reviewed the, was it an audio tape?
It wasn't audio, no, it was um, it was a YouTube recording of the meeting itself.
Okay, so you, 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 you reviewed the video recording of the prior Cramsie meeting. At the time of the February meeting and had an opportunity to view any exhibits with regard to this matter.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, so he'd be eligible to vote if he's one of the first seven, Judy?
Yeah, okay. We ready to vote?
I think so.
Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Cramsie, good luck to you, love the plan.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you all, yeah, thank you so much, we, we greatly appreciate this and um. You know, uh, really, really look forward to showing you all the finished product and then hopefully seeing you around town, thank you again.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
You have, let everybody get a second to get set up, Mr. Condors.
And Mr. Nachesney, the next matter on the board's agenda is the Zimmerer matter, this was commenced at. The earlier meeting of the board on February four, two thousand and twenty-one, it was carried, continued, excuse me, continued to tonight's meeting without the necessitated renotice. Um, and again, do we wanna ascertain who would be eligible to vote if we conclude tonight?
Um, yes, I think, well, Mr. Kinsella is back in the mix, Mr. Leader is, was recused on that one as well, I believe, so.
Yes, and he's indicated he's recusing himself on this one and he's not one of the panelists.
I think we have everybody here and everybody's certified, so. I think we're okay.
Okay, so why don't we bring in, there's Mr. Brodsky, Atkins Council.
Evening, everyone.
Mr. Brodsky, before you begin, I, I know there was another set of uh, floor plans and elevations, do we wanna mark those?
Yes, I think we're at, we're at A five, Mike.
I believe, I believe that's accurate, floor plans and elevations prepared by Anthony Condors, AIA, three sheets, June ten, two thousand and twenty, revised through February twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, A dash five.
Um, Tony, is that the, is that? Okay, I just got, uh, I went off, they, I got kicked off for a second. Okay, there I am.
Mr. Condors, we swore you in the last meeting, right?
Yes, you did.
You understand your man under oath?
Yes, I do.
And Ms. Gable, we swore you and also you understand your man under oath?
I do.
Thank you. I think Mr. Condors, um, Mr. Brodsky was asking if we have the right dates on your revised plans.
Oh, yes, I think Rick's, I think Rick's, uh, Mr. Brodsky's muted right now, I think, oh, there we go. Hopefully, I'm unmuted now.
You are.
Thank you. Yes, so, the, the date of my revised plan is uh. Is February seven.
February what? You broke up.
I think it's seventeen, Mike.
Is it seventeen? Okay.
Yes.
Revised through February.
February seventeen.
Revised through February seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one, okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Rick Brodsky back uh, on behalf of the applicant, as Mr. Irene had indicated. Uh, this, uh, the hearing in this application commenced last month. Um, it pertains to the property that's located at one thirty-nine Park Road, which is a corner property at the corner of. Park Road and, and Park Avenue, uh, the applicants are Hans and, and Morgan Zimmerer, uh, who live at the property. And uh, uh, have proposed uh, based on the, the uh, expansion of their family. Uh, to uh, uh, remove the existing home and to construct a new home. When we presented the plans uh, last month, uh, there was uh, some various concerns raised and comments and the board was uh, very good. In terms of offering uh, feedback, suggestions and what have you, as a result. Um, uh, our architect, Mr. Condors, prepared the revised plans that have, have been submitted. Uh, and I'll let him uh, walk the board through uh, what's proposed, uh, and, and basically the nature of those revisions, which consist primarily of uh. Uh, reducing uh, the proposed garage uh, from a two-car to a one-car. Uh, uh, reducing the size of the proposed pool and reconfiguring it so that no variance relief would be associated. Uh, with, with the pool, um, also um. Uh, reducing uh, the size of that colonnaded, colonnaded porch, cut it in half pretty much. Um, showed some additional landscaping, uh, and uh, and also reduced the size of the home as well. Um, if you recall, when uh, the original plan had proposed an FAR of, 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 we were, we were actually at point, uh, we were actually at point three oh. Where point two eight is permitted, um, we're well under, we're well under the, the, you know. The quantity max, maximum, um, but the ratio is where we were, we, we fell shy. Did reduce the house, got tight, didn't quite get it down to the point two eight that's permitted, we're actually at the point two nine. So we're talking about uh, and you'll hear from Tony, we reduced it by about a hundred and forty-six feet and we're. Uh, just over a hundred feet, uh, square feet or so above that point two eight ratio. And remember, we're dealing with a, you know, uh, undersized lot, corner lot, um, irregularly shaped lot, so Mr. Condors has, had his work cut out for him in terms of designing something that. That can work for the Zimmerer family. So what I'd like to do, unless the board has any questions, um, have Mr. Condors, he's already been sworn. Uh, walk the board through the revised plan and the nature of revisions, uh, the nature of the revisions and hopefully you'll see that uh. I think you did a great job in terms of incorporating uh, the board's uh, questions and concerns. So, Tony, you, you, you uh, ready to roll? Yeah. So, I'll, I'll, I guess I'll share my screen. Sure, and I guess, Tony, you're gonna refer to your revised plans, which have been marked as A five. Right, and I'm gonna bring up the um. The CAD file, which is the exact same thing as the plan that we submitted, but I can just, I can move it around a lot easier if that's okay with the board.
Sure.
Okay, so uh, can, can, can everybody hear me? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, good, um, okay, so uh, we, as uh, Mr. Brodsky mentioned, we, the board gave us some very good feedback at the last meeting and uh. Went into, into uh, consideration, um, so the first concern uh, was the floor area, the floor area ratio, so. What I did was I, I basically took, took the perimeter of the building and took about five inches off of it, five and a half inches actually. And uh, all around, and that actually reduced the building by about a hundred and forty square feet. Uh, which brought our floor area ratio down to about two point nine, at, at two, two point nine, and um. Point two nine. Which, uh, the other benefits of that, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I was saying, Tony, it's, the ratio is at point two nine, right? Point two nine, correct. Yep. Yep. Um, so one of the other benefits of that was uh, it actually allowed the building to get overall about a foot shorter uh, in both directions, so our front setbacks actually. Got a little bit increased on the uh, the Park Avenue side. So that was an added benefit, um, another thing that we did was we reduced the size of the garage from a two-car to a one-car. And we pushed the garage behind the front line of the building, which for your ordinance, uh, keeps the front, the garage out of the front yard. So we eliminated two variances, we eliminated the uh, accessory building not permitted in the front yard. And then we also uh, eliminated another variance regarding the fence, fences above forty-two inches are not allowed to be in the front yard, so we pushed the fence back beyond the line of the uh, of the house. Right, and then, Tony, we also, also the pool, you were able to reconfigure and, and reduce so that. Yep, I reconfigured the pool, yes, I reconfigured the pool and rotated a little bit to, to get it ten feet off of the property line, so we do not need a variance for the pool. Uh, we no longer need a variance for the pool. Um, also, the uh, we had a, we had a covered porch, which was, looked like a colonnade, which was pretty long, um, we reduced that by more than half, uh, so you can. See the size of that, it has now been reduced considerably.
Where does it end now, Mr. Condors?
Excuse me?
Where does it end now, the carpet?
It ends, uh, it ends at the patio, let me show you the elevations. This is how, that, this is now how it's gonna look from the front, it ends, it ends at the same line as the patio. Uh, I do have a, I did revise the three D drawing to uh, include some of these changes, if you'd like me to show it to you. Sure. Please, let's take a look.
No, let, let's, let's, even though we don't have, do we have separate copies of these, if not? If so, we're gonna mark them and if not, we're gonna mark what we have and have screenshots of them, I guess, from the video. So the CAD drawings that we're looking at, we're gonna call that A dash six, right?
That's correct. Correct.
And are you gonna show us three D, A dash seven, three D elevation, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, we had it, we had marked the, uh, the, uh, an, an earlier version of the three D at the last meeting as A four, but this one's a little different, so we'll have that as a, this one is A seven.
All right, A seven is the revised three D elevations?
Correct. Uh, revised, yes, that's correct, revised three D rendering, if you wanna call it that, yeah. Uh, can everybody see that uh, three D drawing? Yes. Yes, okay. Okay, so what I'll do here, I'll just, I'll, I'll draw a line uh. From the house here and bring it across and that kinda shows you how our new garage is actually behind that front line of the house, which uh, eliminates that variance. Um, the pool on this rendering, I have to say, is not in the right spot, um, because I'm unable to move it. For some reason with the program, so I apologize, but you, so the site plan is the, is the pool configuration that would take precedence. But this shows the uh, reduced garage, uh, I'm showing some fencing here, which we had discussed, this is the new fencing that's going along the. The western property line. And I'm showing here that we're adding some shrubs along that front fence line of the, the deck and the pool, so if you look at the property. This would show the new shrubs, now there are of, quite a few existing shrubs, landscaping along these other property lines, which I'm not showing, but those are showing on our site plan. Right.
They're not on the subject property, they're within the red away, correct?
Uh.
Shrubs are.
That is correct. Excuse me?
What, uh, what types of shrubs are you proposing, do you have a certain species in mind?
Well, I was, uh, not particularly either boxwoods or maybe skip laurels.
Okay, thanks.
And, and, and Tony, on the uh, I guess it's the southern property line, I guess, behind the garage? Yeah. It, uh, uh, obviously it's shown on the site plan, but not, and, and on the photos that were submitted, but not shown on the three D, that existing. Uh, that existing landscaping that's over there, those. Yes, that's correct, there's existing arborites uh, that are on that property line that are pretty good sized, uh, and they're on the subject property, so those will remain. And those are tall, right, those are, those are pretty significant. They're, they're uh, close to twelve feet tall, actually. Yeah. Okay. And those are gonna remain, of course. They will remain. Okay. Um. Okay, questions for Mr. Condors?
Yeah, so, so you've cut the, the length of that colonnaded porch by roughly half, is that, is that fair to assess, maybe a little bit more than half?
Um, I could tell you the exact number if you'd like.
I'm just looking at old plan versus new plan, I think.
Yep.
I think it was twenty. Twenty-five down to thirteen or twenty-five and a half down to thirteen, is that right?
Uh, yep, I can get, I'm, I'm sorry to keep you waiting, but I'll, I'll open up the other one and tell you the exact measurement.
We're just going for the benefit of the board to show the, 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 the change, and I also had another question, Mr. uh, Mr. Condors, the patio, that's raised, correct?
It is, yes.
And what's the height of that?
It'll be around twenty-four inches tall.
No, no railing required?
It, it does, it will not require a railing.
Okay. We still have, um, and I, I, I always appreciate uh, the reduction in trying to make it fit, et cetera, et cetera, obviously, it's an odd-shaped lot, you're trying to square the house off in the lot, but we still have a very tight. Uh, setback there on that corner and the corner of the house. Um, we're about five and a half feet there and, and eight feet still to the corner of the house, even with the reduction in size.
Um, right.
That to me is, it, it, I just have to be honest, it's a concerning issue of mine, given that we're talking about new construction here and. Um, any mitigation of any of the, any of the variables should be, in my mind, e- easier to. Work with, given that you're not constrained by a foundation or I'm putting a second story on something, um. I don't know that I'm probably alone in that thought either. Has any, was any thought given to mitigating that, those setbacks are all.
Right, well, uh, one of the reasons, uh, the, the, the required setback is ten feet, um, we put that house at eight feet. Uh, the existing house is actually quite a bit closer to that property line than the new house.
I agree, but if you were putting a second story on the new house, then we would be talking about a, a, an exacerbation, but we're starting from scratch here.
I, I understood, yes, uh, we just felt that it was improving because of, because of the constraints of this lot, um, if you were to meet all the setbacks. It would create a very uh, narrow, almost basically unbuildable house, so we were trying to uh, give a little bit here and there to, to make the house fit. So we were trying to give a little bit here and there to, to make the house fit.
Was any, do you have a depiction of what those setbacks would look like, what the buildable area would be?
I actually do have a little diagram of that, if I can show it, yes.
Now, that's 10 foot to the corner of the house. Are we measuring to the corner of that patio, Ms. Gable?
Uh, yeah, so we, you would measure to the patio since it's, I believe, anything more than six inches above grade that's attached the house gets counted and has to abide by the principal structure setback. If that patio were, you know, ground level, it wouldn't require, I don't think it would require the vary. It would have to abide by the accessory structure side.
Would it be accessory structure, really?
I, I think so. I have to double check the ordinance though, but I'm pretty sure that's the rule.
So given, given, and they're just going to throw it in there on top of Mr. Mr. Ryan's comment. Given that thought, any thoughts to lowering the height of the patio in a certain area? I mean, you're talking about a five foot setback. So I know it's only a patio, but it still is a setback is what it is. So just, just adding on to what I was saying before.
Yeah.
So, Tony, what are we looking at here? We probably should mark this one also, Mr. Ryan, as A8.
And what, what is this diagram of permitted building envelope?
That, yes.
Okay, so that's A8.
Right. So I could answer the question, well, we can go to this, or I can answer the question. But regarding the patio, we could certainly do something with the design of the patio to, to jog it in or whatever, to make it, to make it conform with the setback.
I'm just thinking, I mean, you know, I'm looking at the plan and saying, this is the patio I want to put in, and you know you're really tight to the setback. I, I, I don't know, I wouldn't have.
Yeah, I guess what we were thinking, or I was thinking, I guess, is that it's, it's in an area that's not highly visible. It's, it's near a fence. And this is too obstructive, but if the board felt that we need to jog it in, we certainly could redesign something off of it to improve the setback.
So what would we do, Tony? What would you do, Tony? Bring that, just sort of jog it in, I guess, to, to move it, to increase that corner? What would it be if you, how, how far can you bring it in to make it still look?
I would.
I mean, the setback is.
Yeah, I'd hate to bring it all the way to the 10 feet. If I could, to set, but that would kind of put it in the middle of the back of the house there. So if I could take it down to eight feet, that would be.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not calling out the patio. I'm just adding, you know, saying it's, it's just yet another, another point.
What do you have on the back of the house, Mr. Condors? A bunch of French doors? Leading to that.
Yes, there, yes, there are.
Yeah.
There are some French doors on the back of the house. So I.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I know last month we got a little carried away. We, we focused a lot on the garage, and I, and I really do appreciate the, the reconfiguration of the garage to make it, it makes more common sense that I don't want to see a garage in the front, you know, within the front yard setback. And that's great, but something that we, we touched on, and you reduced the house in size a, a little bit, was that some accommodation or some thought be given to trying to conform or get closer to conforming without triggering deviations in new construction? Yeah, I don't want to belabor the patio point is really what I'm getting at. Because at the end of the day, it's just two feet off the ground, but it's still just another number. You're at eight feet, we should be at 10. You know, I, I don't know that, that coming into the setback line.
I think I could, I could reasonably.
No, I mean, I.
Well, regarding the patio, I, I.
There are plenty of four bedroom, two and a half bath, 2200 square foot houses in town on small lots. But I digress.
Yeah. I was a little confused. If you could go back to the view of the back where you're showing all, all the French doors, are they all opening out to the patio? It looks like there were stairs only to the middle.
That's down to grade, I think, Mr. Mr. Ridgeway.
Well, the stairs are from the, from the patio down to grade. Yeah.
I see these green lines under the center of the doors, of the, so those two, that, what are these two green lines? Is that, are those stairs?
Yeah, those are stairs, but they are, you're seeing the, the doors in the background. This.
They're at the edge of the patio.
So they're all opening out to the back. They're, they all open out to this patio, yes?
Face of the patio and the stairs are on the face.
Do they all open out to the patio?
The French doors all open onto the patio, and then you can see here, there's a set of stairs coming off the back.
Off the patio. And I know.
It's, well, it's a raised patio. It's, it's two feet off the ground.
Yeah, so I was just trying to help, help you here. I think there was some points that the vice chairman was talking about the 5'4" off that patio. Have you ever seen a bluestone patio at grade? You know, maybe, why not, of course, why not a couple steps off those doors down to a bluestone patio at grade and?
We're good.
Eliminating a, a large exacerbation. I get it, this is what, you know, uh, you know, I want to say, I love a raised patio. Looks great if you had the space. That being said, I still have an issue with the eight foot corner there. It, it could be done, you know? You're still at 1% over the far. You're triggering a D. If it were me designing, you know, I think, I don't think differently about that, especially with new construction. Do I really want to, you know, try to, you know, is this the, is this the best thing I can fit in? This is the only thing that will work in this space, and I, I'm not convinced that it is. You're putting a big space, 2,800 square foot into an undersized lot. Just putting that thought out there.
Right.
I had a question.
That, that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
I, I had a question, if I might. You know, I, I know that you're dealing with an odd shaped lot, but I think having the frontage of this, of this house, only 16 feet off the road is a bit of a concern to me. Did you give any thought to maintaining the front of the house on Park Road? Where you only had to set it back, you know, five feet from what was, what was required? As opposed to, you know, cutting into half of what you're expected to have as terms of a setback?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I understand your question.
My, my question is, you, you've got a big massive house, which is fronting basically at this point on Park Avenue. Was there any concern, was there any consideration given to maintaining the front of the house on Park Road?
Uh, one of the reasons, and we, I think we talked about this at the first meeting, was that we were trying to give the, the main facade. We didn't want to do the front of the house on Park Road and have, have the side of the house be highly visible from Park Avenue. So we felt that the, the best facade was the, the longer facade, which would be the Park Avenue.
I, I realize it's a more attractive house this way, but boy, it's a lot of house very close to the road. And that's, that part of my concern on this.
Well, if I, I, I don't know if you, this diagram shows you what we, what we would have to do to make the front setbacks comply. So I, it would, I'd have to try to fit a house inside of this little triangle here, which would.
Can anybody, can anybody, can anybody, can anybody talk to the hardship here?
Well, yeah, I mean, the hardship is, if you look at the site, we've got a significantly undersized lot. It's a corner lot, so we're, we're burdened with front yard setback requirements off of both Park Road and Park Avenue. We're talking about a trapezoidal shaped lot that goes from wide, from wide, a wider width on Park down as it narrows for, as you get towards, towards the, where the garage is proposed. So, so, I mean, I think those are sort of, you know, those are, are definitive hardships when you're trying to, to develop on a property that is irregularly shaped, undersized, and, and a corner lot. I mean, this is.
But it is, but it is a knockdown. And, and you could design it within the, within the specs.
Well, we couldn't design it, we couldn't design a home within the.
You can.
Mr. Brodsky?
Yeah.
I can understand some of the hardships working with an irregular lot. There's a case to be made, I think, for some of the setback relief that's being argued for, at least in my opinion. But can you explain what the hardship is in not conforming to the FAR?
Well, the, the, the SAR, Tony, how much are we above on the, on the SAR in terms of?
One, 1%.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just trying to put it in perspective of the number of feet.
I think it's about 100.
120 feet, I think.
So, so, yeah, yeah. I mean, look, that's driven by, by the Zimmerers who, who live at the property and, and, and own the property and want to stay there. You know, they're proposing, they have three children, they're proposing, they, they've sort of cut the rooms to, you know, basically what's functional for them and what's moved. They prefer, they prefer not to have to relocate, you know, and they want to stay in Fairhaven. They want to stay on this property. And so.
We're still talking about 2,800 square feet. It's not like it's a postage stamp.
No, but I, I bet it, yeah, but.
And, and.
Or is it.
Form to the FAR and not trigger a D variance, and you come in and you still have an appreciably sized property at 2,680. That's just, that's was my, my first point, and, and Mr. Ryan's, is that why would you say, no, I'm going to live, I'm going to die on this, I need 2,800 square feet, and I'm going to go for a D variance for it? I, I, if it was me, I would think differently. Especially with new construction. When I can put the size of the house that fits the number somewhere in the lot. I'm not as, I, 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 I agree somewhat with Dr. Lauffer about the, the, the big frontage on Park Avenue. I think we did bring this up at the last meeting. So one of the things to remember is that enough, which we also saw on the property across the street, that came up a couple of years ago, is that there is an appreciable distance between the lot line and the street itself. So the frontage isn't going to be as egregious as if it were, you know, that, that the lot line was a foot from the curb. I, I think there's probably 12 feet between the lot line and the curb.
That, yeah, that's correct. So when you look at the house, right, from Park Avenue visually, it, it, is that what it is, Tony? Is it 12 feet, that, that additional right of way?
It goes, it goes from 12, it goes from 12 to 16. At, at the, at the front of the house, we're about 35 feet off the curb, actually.
Right, and we're still, it's still a lot of house there. And then, and Mr. Ryan's concern, Mr. Lauffer's my own, is that the, the FAR number, and of course, now we've got that frontage, and you've got a tight setback in the back. And any thing to mitigate, in my mind, would, would, that's, if I was designing it, that's what I would do. I would say, I don't, I know it's going to happen. It's, it's a really weird shaped lot, I get it. But I can design a functional house of 2,650 or 2,670 and lose the D variance on the FAR. That's, that's my thing.
Mr. Condors, you had mentioned how you had pulled, I guess, all four sides of the house in. Did you say five or six inches? I understood you right. I apologize if I didn't hear you correctly. Can you explain, if you continue to pull in the house to come in at 0.28 and conform to the FAR, is there any impact to your design that you could speak of?
Well, yes, of course, there would be an impact because the rooms would continue to get smaller, but technically, yes, I, I, I could do that, obviously. I can't tell you that I can't, but we're trying to accommodate the homeowners as well, so.
Mr. Condors, I'm, I'm curious. You, you said you brought the whole house in, but I'm looking at the old plan as opposed to the new plan. And that, um, that western corner, that southwest corner is still at eight feet. If you had brought the house in, wouldn't we have gained on that?
You did. You gained, remember, in the beginning, I mentioned the front setbacks got, got slightly, it, it's actually farther away from the road than it was.
So you reduced the front, but not the entire package?
Well, no, I reduced the entire house, but I held the eight feet in the back and gave it to the front, thinking that was a bigger concern. I moved the whole house back and kept my eight foot setback.
Oh, so you pulled it back and made it smaller and pulled it, pulled it back off the road by?
Okay. By the 11 inches, right.
I think that's one function with these corner lots, which have the two front setback requirements, is that you're trying to balance between, you know, sort of looming over the street versus taking away much of your backyard. So I'm not, I'm not that offended with the decisions that the, the applicant has made. And also in terms of the patio, I mean, two, two feet off the ground is two feet off the ground. But by the time you put shrubs along the back, the back fence, and the standards for the bulk variance, it's not necessarily a hardship. But I don't know that it really creates something that we have to be overly concerned about if the homeowner wants a patio that's two feet off the, off the ground.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mrs. Quigley. And the, the patio is really not, wasn't the focus. I mean, hell, you can grade up to that patio, and then you won't even, it won't even measure, you know? You can, you can put a planting bed there that, that slopes down to the patio in that corner. I've seen it done.
It's a difficult site to design. If you look at the conforming package that Mr. Condors put up there, I can't imagine a house designed that would fit. It looked like, sort of like a slice of pizza with the top cutoff.
I agree. You're always going to have a setback issue in a trapezoid lot. It's just unavoidable, especially on a corner. I'm, I'm more concerned with the overall size of the, uh, project rather than trying to fit into that odd shape. I'm, I'm not saying you're not going to trigger a variance. It's just, which variance are you choosing to trigger?
What the applicant did in trying to recognize the concerns that the board raised last time was keep the essential pieces of the plan, but just make each piece more modest, so that the house overall wasn't as imposing as it was originally proposed. So, you know, they gave up one of the bays in the garage. They moved the garage back. They got a slight or smaller pool. They got a slight or smaller house. It still all is proportional to, to each other. In a way, I think that really does try to address the issues that the board raised, even though, you know, that point one difference is, is a killer, but.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we, we, you know, we, we did take a little guidance from the house across the street. And I know, I know every application stands on its own. That one was, that one was approved at point three, so.
Barely looming house, as I recall.
Yeah, yeah. And it also has the, it also fronts on Park as well. It's similar, or, or, or it's a similar situation.
That one fronts on Park Road, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. I was, I was saying, the longer part of the house is on Park.
And it wasn't new construction.
It's a little different. So, so, but, but that's where we were going. But Tony, I mean, if we talk about, I mean, how, to, to reduce the house to get to point two eight would be, you know, do you have a concept or, or a feel for how that would be done? Where it could be done so that the bedrooms still work for the Zimmerers?
Yes, I do see spots where I could possibly do it. It's going to be a challenge, but I, yes.
Is it going to be like 120 square feet, did you guys say?
It's over by about 120 square feet.
I don't know. I mean, you can obviously, you know, if you think that that's the best and, and final plan, then you can obviously present what you want to present, Mr. Condors, and you always have. I don't know. I mean, you can obviously, you know, if you think that that's the best and and final plan, then you can obviously present what you want to present, Mr. Condors, and you always have. You do a great job. I just, uh, you know, would be curious that when you're trying to to conform new construction, you and you know you're gonna have setback issues uh, just by the nature of the lot size, um, would look not to trigger any other unnecessary variances. I mean, and that's one, you know, the FAR is being that it's a D is a big one.
Well, yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, certainly, I don't want to create the impression that that was cavalier, and it was an easy, you know, it's not like we, um, the Zimmerers are, and they're on here, they can speak to this better than I, but um, it's not like they're, they were just cavalierly came up with a number. They're trying to come up with bedrooms that would work for the three children. Um, and I think, I don't know, Tony, what what I I guess we have to see from you whether it's 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 doable and hear from and and see if it's something the Zimmerers can make work, I mean, and be able to stay where they want to stay as opposed to having to sell and relocate. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. Um, you know, from our perspective, from Tony's perspective, it didn't seem like that hundred and twenty square feet would be um, so noticeable and uh, would stand out to such an extent based on, you know, weighing that against the challenges associated with trying to uh, trying to uh, build on this, on this weird weird shaped property.
No, and 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 don't misunderstand. I I fully appreciate the changes you made. I see there's, they are significant and and they're welcome. Um, you know, just just the point on, I guess I keep sticking in my head is if it were me, I wouldn't, I know where I wouldn't want to run a foul. I'd try to do everything I could to get into what into the number that I needed, knowing that I have a huge setback issue on at least two sides. So.
Right, and you're right. We'll still, we'd still have those setback issues, even if we.
Either way, you're gonna have a setback.
Off, just because there's no way, there's no way around it. We, you know, I don't think, I don't think that building a house in that little permitted uh building envelope would be aesthetically pleasing or functional.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, anymore, any other questions, guys? Do you, Mr. Condors, Mr. Brodsky, do you have anything further?
Well, I think we would want to take a look at to see, you know, um, I don't know, I mean, are the other, uh, the other board members, uh, it it are the other board members of the same notion that the uh that point two two eight is something that is?
Not sure. Who haven't we heard from? Anybody, um, anybody have thoughts?
I I was just gonna mention that, you know, you did a significant amount of work and 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 I think we appreciate the work that was done to try and move the garage from the front yard setback, the front, the the fence from the front yard setback, and to reduce the size and bulk that was created by the uh, covered porch. Um, and that and that's a lot of work, and some reduction was made to the size of the house, but look at the fact that the that the D variance here, the one requires more votes, the one that's taken more seriously is that habitable floor area ratio. So it's not that the work that was done is not appreciated, it's that the the weight of your burden here is is really because of that D variance, and and I can hear that a lot of people are concerned about it in the in the new construction situation.
Yeah, I I have the same concerns. I I I think that uh there's a lot of really good changes here, and I'm very impressed with, you know, reducing a number of the variances that that we talked about last time. Um, but I too, I'm struggling with D variance for new construction. Um, you know, I I recognize that it's an irregular lot. You have to work with that, but just, I'm not sure I can get comfortable with with going over with something brand new, starting from scratch.
Um, I'm I'm a little bit more comfortable knowing that the property line is uh, further off the curb, uh, which makes me more comfortable with the uh, with a setback on Park Avenue. Uh, I too have a problem with the uh, with new construction and triggering a D variance.
Tony, are are Tony, are you comfortable, based on what we've heard? Um, I mean, can you testify that you would be able to to knock off that hundred and twenty square feet?
Uh, I, yes, I can.
To the point two eight?
I, yes, I I will make that happen.
Um, yeah, I think we've heard from from everyone then, um. So ob- obviously, you've heard the way that that people are feeling and 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 it's not, you know, obviously split, so uh, I guess a reconfiguration would be in order? Um.
Yeah, I'm 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 wondering, Mr. Chair, since it is a fairly, I mean, from an architect, from an architect's perspective, it's, or, I mean, it seems like it's easy to do. Um, but but it's 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 gonna take a little thought both by by the Zimmerers and and Mr. Condors as to where to get that hundred and twenty feet. But we can do it. And I I'm not, I I guess what I'm asking is, would the board be comfortable voting on it? Uh, subject to the uh, on it, uh, to a condition that we resubmit plans before next, before the next meeting?
Well, well, to be quite, to be quite honest with you, Mr. Brodsky, we're going to have an issue with the next meeting. We have an extremely full agenda in April. Um, and I would not, to be perfectly frank, be 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 willing to put this again to go first against the people that we've put off already to go to that one, and if, and and considering that it's gonna take, I mean, Mr. Condors is extremely talented, but I'm sure he wants to take some time and come up with a with a really nice plan. Um, as I'm sure the Zimmerers want to see, and I would suggest if we're going to move this, then we should reschedule it to May.
I just gotta ask Mr. McChesney, wo- would it be at all possible to vote on the setback?
I don't.
Requirements, and then perhaps deny the D?
No, because if you deny the D, then you'd have to come back with something materially different, and if it's only gonna be a small reduction in size, that's, Mr. Irene, can you give me some guidance on that? But I think I'm right?
Well, it 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 sounds, Mr. Chairman, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brodsky, but the applicant is considering actually withdrawing the D, saying they'll conform.
Correct.
Uh, but then the question's going to be, is the board comfortable voting on the setbacks? Even though something may change. Now, they may improve, but again, you, I'm not sure that you know where that hundred and twenty feet's gonna come from. So if if you're comfortable voting on the setbacks with the applicant withdrawing the D, that's fine. So the setbacks would have to be as proposed or better.
Not to exceed the setbacks, and then we would have to, and I'm just thinking out loud, um, you would vote on a number not to exceed whatever that number is, that's twenty eight percent?
Well, they have to conform to the FAR.
Right.
Because there would be, they would be withdrawing the application for FAR relief, stipulate that they will conform to the FAR, and presumably asking for the setback variance relief that's on the table.
Not to exceed the.
To be that or better. But but again, it's up to the board if you're comfortable not knowing where the change may play out.
Uh, uh, obviously, Mr. Condors, Mr. Brodsky, I don't wanna, on, you know, I I don't wanna say, yeah, you gotta wait two months and come back with another plan that we could push through. Um, I I don't, I don't know how the board feels about this. I technically, I guess, Mrs. Quigley, I could see that as a possibility, just to to expedite our process a little bit and say, okay, if you're gonna withdraw your D and come back with a conforming plan not to exceed this number and not to exceed the, or 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 not to exceed the setbacks as the plan is submitted. I guess that's how you would say it.
Not to exceed the the short, the shortage of the setback.
Well, the, you know, obviously, the garage would stay as submitted, the the eight foot corner would not be anything greater than eight foot or anything less than eight foot, that that sort of thing.
Yeah, and 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 I think, Mr. Chair, and 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 Mr. Irene, correct me if I'm wrong, if we just prove, if we withdrew the request for the D, um, we would then be, uh, the board would be voting on on all of the other, on the other bulk variances associated with the proposed plan. And um, if it turned out, you you can always build less, right? You can always, you you've always increased the setbacks, but the approvals would be for the setbacks as proposed uh, as part of the plan.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, Mr. Brodsky, is the the resolutions generally say it's per the plan that we approve.
Okay.
So 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 again, I think if, in fact, the board sees fit to go that way, you withdraw the D, stipulate you're gonna conform on the habitable floor ratio, ask for the variance relief as per the plans, then the board, I assume, could consider granting those bulk variances or better.
Right.
Um, and if if you end up removing some square footage so that a five, whatever it is, eight foot setback becomes eight and a half, I suppose, all the better. Um, but again, it's up to the board if if they actually want to see what it's gonna look like when you remove a hundred and twenty square feet or not.
Mike, that would, that would then give the Zimmerers the opportunity to have the plans redrawn, presumably ask for building permits and not have to return to the board?
Well, again, it, you know, I I, because I don't, I I'm always hesitant to say that because I don't know what the plan is gonna look like compared to the plan that's before the board.
But I don't want to put undue hardship on either the Zimmerers or or the Mr. Brodsky, Mr. Condors, but I I personally, I like to see it on the piece paper. I'd like to see what it is that we're approving and not something that, oh, yeah, here, but you can build something, don't go over this, because I I I'm sorry, that's just me.
And 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 again, it, I I certainly defer to board. It's up to the board. The other thought would be, I don't, I don't know, because I'm not an architect, and I don't know how the the square footage was calculated, whether Mr. Condors could essentially eliminate some habitable floor area while leaving the structure pretty much the way it is. I don't know.
I think the other thing to consider is that you're, if you approve the setbacks, you're improving a five point four foot side yard setback. And then there's a change to the plan, then the house could be five point four feet off of the property line instead of the.
So the patio.
That's being five point four feet off the property line.
That's a good, that's a very good.
Well, and and that's the reason, Mr. Shu, you're absolutely right. That's the reason that the resolutions generally say as depicted on the plan. So for instance, if you have a house that has a jog in it and only one corner of the house fails to meet the side yard setback, we call it out as a setback at eight feet where ten is required as depicted on the plans, because you don't want to get the entire side of the house now setback short as opposed to just the one corner as the board saw it on the plan.
I I guys, and and I'd like some um, thought from everybody else, if they care, if they uh, would indulge.
Mr. Nachesny, uh, I, you know, I I think the Zimmerers have done a very nice job with this, and uh, but I I feel personally uncomfortable approving a plan even with this, with stipulations on something that I haven't seen as the final proposed plan. So I I I I hate to put them off, but I I I'm not comfortable approving it with these kind of stipulations. I like to see what I'm voting on.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Dr. Lauffer.
And Peter, I'm, as far as process, I'm a little confused where we are. Has testimony been closed, and we're now having this?
Uh, we're, we've.
Open discussion?
We started pulling the.
Or or uh, are we gonna take anybody from the audience and just?
No, 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 no. We started polling the board. Mr. Brodsky and Mr. Condors asked us to poll the board to see what our thoughts would be about. Would we be able to approve something with a reduction? They wanted to know where where our thoughts were. And that's kind of morphed into this, you know, Mrs. Quigley made a suggestion, and I I, you know, wanna, and no, 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 we're still gonna have public thoughts and 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 our own deliberation if necessary. Um, I just want to get a thought on, is it, is this something that that the board would be comfortable voting on a plan that we don't see? With just, don't exceed, don't exceed these, these, these numbers. That's really what we're doing now, Mr. Ridgeway.
Well, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think you've heard a few members say that there would be some concern. I I don't know how you could approve without seeing a plan, without I I, it might, you know, sorry, you're gonna go away, we're gonna approve something, but you're gonna come back with something, and then that's gonna be the plan, so.
Mr. Shu, that brings up an excellent point. You're proving a five foot four corner. You can put whatever the hell you want there. Not that you would, but you could. So that being said, I don't think we're gonna go down that route, unfortunately, uh, Mr. Brodsky.
Well, I I I appreciate, I appreciate, Mr. Chair, but basically, right, the the the, o- obviously, if time were not an object, I I wouldn't make the request. Um, we're trying to uh, um, you know, the Zimmerers are anxious to 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 get going, and uh, um, I'm just trying to figure out a way to save the time, obviously, um. I'm gonna ask Mr. Zimmerer, I'm gonna ask Hans to just speak to the board really briefly. I mean, i- it's not a situation where this is, uh, you know, this is for themselves, and, you know, they're they're longstanding Fairhaven residents. They're not going to, you know, try and pull a fast one by bringing the house to within five point four feet. That's just not the kind of people they are.
Understand that. We just want to see what, you know.
Understood.
Uncomfortable voting on something that they don't see.
Understood, understood. Um, um, but having said that, if I could just have, if I could just just take a moment and just have Mr. Zimmerer uh, address the board on on that, I I would appreciate it, just for two minutes.
Sure.
And.
Did we, did did we swear you in last time, Mr. Zimmerer?
Uh, no, sir.
Uh, so if you give us your full names, but your last and your address for the record, please?
Sure, it's uh, Hans Zimmerer, Z I M M E R E R, one thirty nine Park Road, Fairhaven.
And I'm gonna swear you in, please. You do swear your testimony to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so Hans, it it it, as I said earlier, you guys live at the property now, and 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 what you want to do is stay at the property, but in a house that that uh, can accommodate the family. And uh, I know time, time is an issue for you, and you heard the concerns of the board, and we've gone back and forth. And uh, I just wanted you to confirm that, um, you know, you have authorized Mr. Condors uh, to, you know, do what he needs to do with with regard to reducing the size of the home so that we would eliminate the necessity of the D variance and bring that F A R down to point two eight, even though it's not the ideal situation for you. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And 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 when you were, when you were, um, when you were designing the house and came up with the size, I mean, obviously, it was a thoughtful process in terms of, right, the the sizes of the bedrooms and all of that, and so.
That is correct as well. Yes, we have three children. Yes.
And 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 so what would be the effect of of, you know, reducing the F A R down to the point two eight?
Uh, well, I I guess the the, there's a bedroom number three that I was a little concerned about that would become very, very shrunken compared to what uh, Tony had put forth.
Yeah.
Um, so that that was um, the reason why, uh, while reduced from the last presentation in February, um, that was the 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 reason why we kept uh, still above the F A R.
Right.
But of course, um, you know, uh, in consultation with the board, we're we're probably gonna be adjusting that downward to make sure that that complies. So there's a D variance would not be required.
Right, okay. Um, all right, I don't know if any of the board members have questions for for Mr. Zimmerer or not, um, but he's here. If if anyone does. And uh, I hear, I hear the board's uh, concerns. It's just that I don't know, is there, i- i- is there no way that we can get on to the April meeting?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, maybe do we, if if the board members have no questions from Mr. Zimmerer, do you want to open to the?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'd like to, I'd like to go to the public before we uh, before we decide about a date. If that's okay with you, Mr. Brodsky.
Of course.
Okay, um. Um, if the board is finished with, uh, and and I just want, actually, Mr. Zimmerer, and I appreciate that and 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 in the, uh, you know, uh, the the interest of time, and I know you want to get moving, I I really do appreciate that. The the problem being that people are just not comfortable voting on a plan that's not presented. It's it's, I mean, I've been on the board, uh, twelve years and I've never done it before. I'm just a little bit, you know, uh, concerned with that whole process, as you've heard many of the other board members are. So it's, believe me, it's not trying to put undue hardship on you, it's just that it's very difficult for us to approve something that we not see.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for all the candid feedback. Appreciate it and your time.
Okay. Um, that being said, any members of the public interested parties wish to comment on or lend support or criticism of the plan?
Nothing out there, Pete.
No? But the record show none. Uh, A- April, I just, I know we jammed up with April, and this is a problem, Mr. Brodsky, we had the issue before with the, with the, we have another application that that was behind yours at the last meeting, who we have moved to May as well. Uh, because it's, it's, it's a full, very, very full agenda. Also, the submission of plans, um, it's going to require to be done fairly short order due to the notice period. I I don't know that we're going to be able to get you on for April. Judy, we'd said we have four, right?
Elena, if you want to chime in too, I'm thinking of four that are complete, um, possibly a fifth.
Yeah, let me hold on. Uh, I, I know there's at least three that are deemed complete that don't that I don't know if they've been assigned a meeting day per se, but
There are three that we were thinking would be April. Obviously, they haven't noticed yet.
Um, Mr. Nachesny, there's, it's, it's entirely up to you and the board how you want to proceed. There's always the possibility of telling Mr. Brodsky that we can put you on, that your plans have to be in no later than ten days in advance of the hearing, and there's no guarantee that we're going to reach you, but if you want to take the chance and go on in case a couple of the other folks drop out or ask to be carried. I I mean, that's something to consider. I don't know if the board wants to stack additional ones on.
I think that's a pragmatic, uh, solution, Mr. Irene, uh, and and I think that's something that we can work with. Um, I won't guarantee that you'll be first in a, you know, obviously, we have people who are waiting as well. So why don't we do that? Why don't we suggest a, um, April, but no guarantee that we're going to get it in. Is that, is that work, Mr. Brodsky?
Sure, that, we'll take what we can get, Mr. Chair. I don't, and and now, let me just ask one more question.
Of course.
I don't know if the board is inclined, but sometimes, sometimes the board will authorize the, uh, uh, the attorney to to draft the resolution of approval to bring to the meeting in the event that it were to be approved. So again, it saves another.
For Mr. Irene on that.
Uh, you, you know, Mr. Brodsky, if this was a two lot minor subdivision, fully conforming without variance relief, that would be pretty easy. But it's kind of difficult for me to do that, not knowing what the numbers are going to be and not knowing who's going to say what at the next meeting, not even knowing what the plans are going to be. So I I I would, I would prefer not to try and do a resolution that doesn't really reflect everything that's occurred, particularly since it hasn't occurred yet when I'm drafting it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So we have no more members of the public, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Then I will, um, I will make a motion to carry the Zimmerer application to the April eighth meeting with no necessity to renotice. Uh, and we hope we will be able to get you in and completed on that date with a, with a more conforming plan, let's call it.
That would be great and and
Well, let me, let me clarify that before you vote. Um, it would be going to the April eighth meeting, but with the understanding that they are not going to be on the first on the agenda.
That's correct.
Yeah, uh, two, two cases will come before then. Two other applicants.
Yes, we will endeavor to to
Okay.
Get this heard, but there's no guarantee.
Appreciate that, and we will, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure Tony gets the revised plan in as as soon as possible, just so at least we have a shot.
Right, but but no less than ten days in advance, Mr. Brodsky, so Ms. Gable has a chance to review it and the board members have a chance to review it. And we're going to ask for a stipulation extending time which the board has to act through, uh, just through the May meeting also.
Agreed.
Okay, that's May sixth. So the April date is April eighth?
Yeah. I need a second.
Second.
Who is that?
Mr. Kinsella.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nachesny?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley? Mr. Ridgeway? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
So the matter is carried to the April eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the board, same time, the Zoom plans to be in no less than ten days in advance, it's carried without the necessity of renotice. Any interested parties mark your calendar accordingly, there'll be no further notice. Mr. Brodsky has given us a stipulation through the May meeting of the board extending time which the board has to act. And no guarantee that we'll reach you, Mr. Brodsky, but we'll, we'll see how things shake out. If if some of the other applications drop out, maybe we can get to you.
Sounds good. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Right.
Okay. I knew he was there.
Let the record reflect the chairman leader has rejoined the board.
Welcome. I had my hand up. Everyone, uh, you know, we've got a major problem with scheduling. And the problem is not simply that we have three or four completed applications that have been waiting, by the way, not just, not just ready. Um, you know, a number of these applications have been waiting months um, to even get on to the agenda. So while I appreciate the applicant that we just saw having timing concerns, you know, everybody has timing concerns. Um, I think we need a special, and I think maybe we need two specials, and I think we need to blow through these applications. Um, I think it's unfortunate that you, first of all, Peter, really nice job dealing with very difficult issues. I really commend you. It is so hard to feel your way through these things because you just want to say yes, you just want to help. It's very, very hard, particularly with scheduling. Uh, I assure you that if the other applicants were available and comfortable speaking, they would tell you that they were, uh, really struggling with how long it's taken to get before this board to move their projects through as well. Um, and so, uh, what I'd like to suggest um, is that we talk about, uh, holding one and potentially two specials between, um, I mean, at this point, it's got to be between April and May and potentially between May and June, um, to clear this backlog. Um, you know, I just, I also want to point out, this isn't us. There, there's nothing about the secretarial position and there's nothing about the administration, there's nothing about COVID. This is just the coincidental timing of having eight or nine applications all hit us in the fall. Um, but, you know, we do this for a particular reason, and that's to contribute to our community. And, um, we do that. We we give it our all. But I would suggest we give a little more than all and, um, and and at least schedule one, try and schedule one, and then if we need it, schedule one more. I think, I think you're right, Todd. I think it's necessary. I think we're just, we're going to get so far behind and and I see people questioning, you know, oh, I'm doing a small project, how do I get a variance or how do I do this? It's not going to get any better. And then you're going to be, have people waiting a year, you know, it's, it's crazy. Well, you know, when people come back multiple times, it might as well be multiple applications. I mean, you know, i- it's, it's effectively the same thing. And, you know, you don't have easy ones coming up. Um, and what happened tonight was that we had a third on the agenda that we could have made some progress. It's only nine eighteen, man. Yeah, we could have, absolutely. So this was exactly my problem when Ms. Krimko jumped in and asked to be carried because I figured that there was going to be time tonight, but we didn't find out early enough to let anybody else notice to get in the slot. So I did, I did what I never do. I pushed her to show. Um, and get started, um, you know, because how are you going to balance all of these equities, you know, it's just. No, we could have definitely made headway into that tonight. I I, you know, I don't know.
Are there any sort of informal discussions? I don't want to go into dangerous waters here.
Oh.
Um, the applicants to have some sort of a heads up. I mean, obviously, Mr. Brodsky would know about a D variance, but, um, I think in some other towns, there's more informal discussions between the board members, the applicants, you know, it seems to me like they're coming in and everything is just so new and fresh. It's like we're just going through the whole thing at the meeting. And it really, I know it's necessary to do to come to the right decision, but sometimes I get the feeling that the applicants would be better served by having a more focused, uh, hearing.
I don't think, oh, I think it's an open public meetings act violation if we were to have some sort of discussion about any of the cases beforehand with it, with any sort of quorum. Right, Mr. Irene?
Even without a quorum, Mr. Nachesny.
Even without a quorum.
Yeah, you don't want, i- i- if the question is, can board members discuss an application with an applicant's stance, the answer is no.
There, there is, there is a process for the planning board that
Sounds correct.
Planning board has that authority inside the MLU, all the zoning board does not. Um, and look, if you're dealing with, you know, an applicant that hasn't hired an expert, you're dealing with one set of facts. You're dealing with an applicant that has an architect that's been before the board, you're dealing with a different set of facts, and yet a different set of facts altogether when you've got an architect and an attorney that's been before the board. I, I, if I were coming before the board, I'd come to a few meetings.
That's exactly right.
They, they, they tend to be a little similar, you know, we're not, we don't focus on different things every, every week, you know, it's the same stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so. With the benefit now, you can watch a YouTube video through, I watch every council meeting, may not, may not be live, but I watch him, you know, Thursday night or Wednesday night or whatever time I have time, I'll say, I'll put the council meeting on. And I love the fact that I can see any, actually, not just council, but any commission is now you, is now on YouTube. Betty Ann's page is fantastic.
You know, Mr. Chairman, maybe another thought is, maybe we start stacking four up for meetings. So if one or two drops out, you know, it's kind of like what the court system does. The judge never sits there with nothing to do. It inconveniences everyone else if they're sitting around waiting. Uh, but they, but they stack them up, and we tell people number three and number four, you know, you're three or four, you may not get reached. If you want to be adjourned, that's fine, but you're not necessarily going to get carried to the following meeting. We do as we did tonight. If you're asking for the adjournment, it gets bumped back two months, and you can't be heard to complain that it's taking a long time if you've asked for the adjournment.
So Sandy, this is, this is important. Um, what we typically can get through is a couple. We typically schedule the third, and what Judy usually tells the third is that we're going to put you on, but, you know, we may not reach you. And sometimes they say, well, don't even put me on because I've got two thousand dollars an hour worth of professionals and I don't want to sit around. But, you know, at least we've made the effort. Um, Michael, I don't want to go to four because there's never a night I, we've ever done this that we could get through four. It does allow you to have an option if somebody cancels out, but then you've got residents that are being noticed for meetings that aren't happening. That's a whole different group of people that are inconvenienced.
That's, that's all true.
Remember these nights? I mean, sometimes people are taken off of work or whatever, you know, you get people that want to just come in and say their piece and they're waiting through hours and hours. Now, sometimes multiple nights, we've had matters that have carried four meetings, um, got to balance it all.
Yeah, I think when these were in-person meetings, that was more the case, but now that they're more available wherever you happen to be, it's not quite as much, at least for the public that's interested.
And we've had more public participation now that we're on on virtual than we ever have in person, but I I agree with what you're saying, Todd. Here's a question that came up, though. If we go to a special meeting, how does that affect the notice for the, you know, people that get noticed? I mean, that's, I, I, and I, how does that affect the timeline, the the exclusion dates, all that stuff?
We, we do an open, we have to do an open public meetings act notice, so if we're going to notice for specials, we may want to just pick a date every month and just notice for the rest of the year. So you have that in the open public meetings act notice. So if you want to activate one of those dates, you can. If you don't want to, you just cancel it, but at least you've done the notice for each of those dates. So I I would suggest, unless there was a large application where someone's coming in and saying, we're going to have this large application, we'll want to pay for a special meeting, we're asking for such and such a date, and the board agrees, then we do an open public meetings act notice for that one date. But being that this may be a rolling kind of thing, you may want to do an open public meetings act notice for all of the alternate dates going forward, so you have them for the rest of the year. And then what would happen, Mr. Nachesny, if we assign somebody to the third Thursday in the month of May, they would notice for that date, but we would have it covered in the open public meetings act notice.
So I like that idea. There's no reason not to notice for it, and if we wind up not using it, so be it. Um, I was a little taken aback at the idea that we might have two meetings a month through the end of the year, but we won't. But at least we have them, and the truth is that, you know, if the we have four, Zimmerman's five, Sullivan, I guess, is six, right? Six active matters. Some other ones are going to come in, and if any of these continue to carry, you know, the backlog just continues.
Mm-hmm.
Another
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Uh, what's the pain point for our length of meetings? Oh, I mean, how late have we gone? I mean, to get through this, I mean.
What's our record?
Do we have a record?
A couple of months ago.
The the latest, the latest ones I remember were in the auditorium on Dunkin'.
I'm not going to go by that measure, but, um, you know, I mean, would we consider? I don't want to go to, you know, not a Dunkin' Donuts exception, but, I mean, typically, our meetings go till
Ten. Plenty of of eleven o'clock meetings, John, we, you know.
I would say, you know, I I, I mean, if we, if need be, wouldn't maybe all sort of like have a cup of coffee and go to eleven?
Yeah, look, I'm with you. I'm up anyway. Uh, you know, and we're home now, we can drink bourbon, we can do this thing. But I think, I think the issue is, well, we usually continue. If we're into something, I finish it, right? But you're not really going to start one at ten. Um, it it isn't, at least that's not ideal. And and what I don't like again about scheduling that fourth is that you, you provide yourself some additional opportunity to get through something, but you also pump in a whole bunch of additional uncertainty. All right, so, um. Should we put some dates out there now or should we, I don't know? So, so so normally, when we're scheduling these things, we need, um, council changes. On Zoom, we don't. I think the ideal, the opportunity would be the intervening Thursday. Um, you know, in between the two meetings, but I feel like we should check with the borough and make sure there's nothing else scheduled. Um, and then I think we should do them in some way that there's some natural rhythm to it, so it seems regular versus irregular. And would you suggest, I mean, the
I think the only, the only Thursday I know of for sure, or at least it used to be, was the historic commission, one Thursday a month. But I think it was the last Thursday of the month.
Their meeting, I think, on Tuesdays now.
On Tuesdays.
I think that's what I've seen on the calendar.
Okay, well, maybe it was planning board that they were conflicting with.
I'm going to go grab the calendar.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at one now. This, uh, historic commission is the last Tuesday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Can I throw one more idea out there to kind of follow along lines of what Mr. Ridgeway is suggesting? Is it possible to start earlier? I mean, would that give us more flexibility to to go a little bit longer and?
You just got to allow people to get home from work, though. That's the only problem, Mr. Ludman, you know.
Yeah, I know. I, that, that's, I guess, traditionally the issue, but a lot of people aren't going anywhere to work or, you know, so I, me personally, uh, though, I don't know if that's an option. We might think about it, too. That would at least give us a little more time.
Um, I pulled up the borough's calendar and it looks like the third Thursday is Fairhaven Fields Advisory. Wait, that was only in January, though.
July, I see it in July as well.
There, every, just every other month, every other month.
Okay.
How about the second Thursday?
But that shouldn't be an issue, though, if that, if they only, I mean, can we overlap that? Why not?
But that shouldn't be an issue, though, if that, if they only had, I mean, can we overlap that? Why not? It's not like we're using the building.
Do they use Zoom for their meetings? Do you?
Yeah, they, they probably do.
Well, look, we're on the Borough account. There's a limited number of meetings. I, I don't, we shouldn't jam it through tonight. We don't have to. Sandy and and maybe Joe, if you can support Sandy in this, let's find out availability of that interim Thursday. Just communicate with me, add, add Peter, let's make him go through it. We'll make sure that makes sense. And then and then we'll circulate an email to the board and then everybody will know. And if it's not that Thursday, we'll figure out some other repetitive night. We'll pitch it, we'll issue the notice. And then importantly, I want to be able to reach out to these applicants and schedule them. Particularly all the ones that are in the hopper that have not had a date. You know, we can let, you know, Zimmerman be on in in April. You watch, you watch, we're going to clear right through and we're going to have nothing to do in our regular meetings. That's the way this is going to work. It's the way it always works. But so be it.
You know, Todd, I wanted to bring up one thing earlier. I'm sure everyone's aware of what's going on with the real estate market, not only in Fairhaven, but in Rumsen. There are people moving in, there is no inventory, so I think people are settling for houses that they probably wouldn't buy, which leads me to believe that people are going to be doing renovations and we will probably be seeing more people coming before us in the near future. We have five in the hopper by the end of the summer. Who knows? So I, so I think being as proactive as we possibly can to clear this logjam is only going to benefit us in the long run, even if we don't have to get there. You know, just to, just to make sure that we're clear in case this deluge does come.
I, I can tell you that we've got about 18 denials that are pending that haven't not been heard yet. And there, and there are several more coming your way.
That's the problem. You guys always say no. Would you say yes some more and we'd be, we'd have less to do.
The party of no, Todd, right?
Well, let us not, let us not leave this discussion on a negative note. It is so fantastic that our real estate market is vibrant. It is so fantastic that we have people that want to invest in our town. And as we turn over this housing stock, you know, Fairhaven is much, much better for it. So we're going to do our job and we're going to get through it.
It's crazy. There are three houses on the market in Fairhaven, and two of those are new construction across the street from you. It's nuts.
Yeah, I, I have a friend who's been looking for months and they can't find, they lived here. They moved to Rumsen thinking they would be able to get a house and they, they're just stuck. And the things that are going on the market, like $1.6 million, it's crazy, crazy, not even built yet.
I'm just looking at the calendar. I want to just quickly go back to that. Uh, yeah, March, that, you know, the, the advisory committee, but we could easily put two meetings in April and then two meetings in June. Because the advisory committee is every other third, you know, every other month, and we could take that other slot. That's, it's just, just putting it out there. So I know we'd love to get another one in March, but we could easily do two in April.
You mean, two specials?
No, we have the meeting on the 8th. We could do the 22nd because it's a clear Thursday. The environmental, there's nothing on that Thursday.
I'm sorry, this March, as in, as in a few weeks?
No, April.
April.
This March, the third Thursday of this, of this month is Environmental Commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to start as soon as possible. Yeah, April.
The third Thursday.
April, we can net, we can definitely do the 22nd in April is an open date.
That's, that's the fourth Thursday, Pete. The third Thursday.
Oh, right, because we're, okay. It's, it's still an open date.
Well, the other, the other thing I would suggest is this, once we start scheduling these up, no roll into the next special two weeks later. If somebody doesn't finish, they're going to roll to the subsequent one-month meeting.
Yeah, whatever the meeting is. There's actually, there's five Thursdays in in April.
That's too many.
Yeah, we should get rid of one of those. It's just not allowed.
All right. So we're all in agreement as to a general plan here to put in the specials for the balance of the year?
Yeah, whether we use them or not.
At some point, somebody will let Sandy know what dates so she can put in the notice, the legal notice.
Sandy's, Sandy's going to let me know and Peter know what's available.
Okay.
I'm checking the calendar, right? That's what I'm doing?
I don't know who's in, Teresa's in charge of most stuff. Touch base to Teresa, tell her what we want to do.
Okay.
Says, I, I do think the Zoom account's an issue. I think we probably only have one portal.
And we do.
We can't have two Fairhaven meetings at the same night.
Okay.
And Sandy, if I might suggest that you contact Elena and I, because we have to check our calendars, too, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was really discourteous of me to not even think.
No, no, no.
Well, generally, generally speaking, Mike and Elena, the Thursdays typically still work or?
I'm out the fourth Thursday, Joe, but generally, I'm okay on the third. But when you get into the holidays, you know, boards tend to move things around. But but generally, I'm okay on the third, but I'm out on the fourth.
I'm usually okay on Thursdays. Every now and then I have to cover a meeting for somebody else who has a conflict, but for the most part, my Thursdays are pretty open.
All right. All very good.
Yeah.
Minutes?
Yeah, minutes. February minutes. I had no issues with the February minutes. If anybody.
Judy, are these the ones that I tweaked?
Yes.
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Leader.
I didn't tweak these. I tweaked the planning board meeting minutes. Judy and I don't know what, we don't know what board we're on.
I'll approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, allow for a second.
All right, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley? Quigley? You still here? Okay. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Yeah, one more small administrative item, as Mr. Leader mentioned pre-meeting. Since Mrs. Papa is now taking over, welcome to her. Can everybody kind of update her on your preferences for paper or plastic regarding plans? Sandy, I'm good with digital. I, I don't require the big lots of paper anymore. Not enough desk space.
Okay. And Mr. Leader, I'm going to go straight down.
Yeah, that's the way to do it. I'll go straight digital, Sandy. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ridgeway?
Digital's good, save a tree.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Ryan?
I like paper. If I'm the only one, I'll live with digital.
Mrs. Quigley?
Digital's fine, thanks.
Mr. Ludman?
Digital's good for me. Thank you.
Dr. Lauffer?
I guess I'll go kicking and screaming into the current age and go digital.
Uh, Mr. Kinsella?
Sorry, Marty, digital.
Mr. Shia Vetti?
Digital is fine for me. Thank you.
Mr. Irene?
Digital's fine.
And Ms. Gable? I like paper. I guess I'm the only one. I like to have my paper copies of all the drawings.
Mr. Ryan, Mr. Ryan, do you want paper since I'm doing a paper anyway?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right.
Marty's wallpapering a wing.
I'm a paper person, too, so don't feel bad.
Actually, all the applicants are still in the habit of submitting like 10 copies, so I'll have to tell them to.
Right, well, we have to do some changes.
Saving them money, aren't we?
Yeah, no, no, we should, we should alter our instructions so that typically ask only for what we need. We're not saving any trees if they just get pitched.
Uh, just a couple of points, logistically, just that I've observed. There's several people who have bad internet connections. Mr. Condoros must be down in his basement with no Wi-Fi. And a couple of you also have low volume and some choppy breakup digitally on your internet connections. If preferred, if you're close to your router, plug an ethernet cable between your router and your laptop or whatever you're using, that'll give you a much better connection. I will reach out to Mr. Condoros to let him know the same because it does alter and affect your record. That's one point. What was the other point I was going to make? Well, that's the P, that's the key one. Oh, and as far as the exhibits go, that's another point I was going to make. Your exhibits that get presented during the meeting, you may want, this is more for you, Sandy or Judy, depending on how you're working it, is you may want to request that an e-copy of those be sent to you as well. Just so that you have a permanent record of what they've presented.
So the last exhibits that went up for.
Zimmerer with the, the CAD diagrams. I don't know if we'll take CAD, but we should get some representation of that. And there are 3D renderings, I think.
Okay.
Do we also keep the videos, Joe, of the?
Uh, yeah, the videos, the videos are kept. We have us, I keep a separate file of all the recordings.
So worse comes to worse, we can actually see what was pulled up.
Correct.
Are there instructions to the applicants on all of that, Joe?
Um, I don't know, Elena. I think there was. I know what, when, when Jen was here, there's, there's a bunch of information that went out about what the applicants are responsible for, so. What's that, Judy?
Still goes out with the application. We think it's all attached.
Yeah, there's a requirement on the checklist that they have to provide DWG, which are AutoCAD drawings and also PDF of the plans. And so I've noticed that actually a lot more people have been submitting the actual PDFs now because of COVID, so it works for us, you know?
But also instructions about attending the meeting? You know, you need a kit, you know, you, you need, you need some things?
Well, we don't, we don't give them technical instructions. We simply give them instructions as to how to join.
Okay. I guess, all right. Probably do it over your phone, yeah.
Yeah, the, the instructions do also, Mr. Ridgeway, indicate to people that they don't have a computer, they can join the meeting via phone. That's all part of the Open Public Meetings Act, you know, requirements, trying to allow people the opportunity to join. It also, it also tells them if for some reason they don't have a computer and can't access the plans that they can contact the board secretary to make arrangements to get a paper copy.
Yes.
So it tries to cover all those eventualities so we don't have someone come up and say, well, I wanted to participate in the meeting as an object or an insta-party and I couldn't join on because I don't have a computer, I don't have a phone, I don't have internet access. It tells them how to, how to participate.
Uh, I do think that one of the lasting benefits of COVID is going to be that we finally got, you know, our meetings up on YouTube, that we finally got our plans up on the website. I think all that stuff is tremendous progress. And it is important to remember that people have all those resources available to them. I mean, you know, we're always heavy no matter what, but there is a limit to how much we can do. You know, they need to help themselves. A lot of, a lot of resources out there for them.
And and speaking of of the notice requirements, maybe Judy and Sandy can help me out, but my recollection is when we first crafted those notices for the Open Public Meeting Act and for the applicants to inform interested parties with their notices how to join the meeting, we also provided a telephone number and an email for Jen at that time in case someone was trying to log in and was having difficulty or wanted to make arrangements to see the plans. Do we need to update that now for Sandy?
I would assume so.
Yeah, that, that, so, yeah, that, that was one of those questions that was kind of a statement. So what we want to do, Sandy, is we want to take a look at that notice.
That, yeah.
Yeah, we want to take a look at that and fix that to make sure we got, we have any, any kind of inquiries going to you. And so that if even if someone's trying to join in tonight during the meeting and they're having problems, they have a means to, to.
Oh, mute yourself, Mike.
Means to get access to someone who might be able to help them. It was like deja vu all over again.
I just want to say one more thing before we wrap up. I thought the resolution of CramsY was terrific. And it wasn't easy to get there because there was all that resistance, but, you know, it may have been a small adjustment. It's night and day. It is night and day in terms of how that little house looks from the street. That is what we do, that is why we do it. You go backwards, you go forwards, you know, you always look at it the same way, but I just, great, great result.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Post it to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Be well, be well, everybody.
Thank you.